And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two additions. One, under citizen input, we have Mr. Mike Catchmark here, a candidate for sheriff. We have an update under department reports with the police department. There is also updated liquor financials, updated claims, and updated resolutions under new business. Those are not adds, but they're modifications.
Okay. So we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, item D, approval of minutes, the minutes of the September 19th meeting were included with your PECA, are there any changes to those? Now we'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, citizen's input, Mike, you're up, join us. State your name, state your business.
Well, my name is Mike Catchmark, and I'm running to be your next Wright County Sheriff. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and for everybody here in attendance. A little bit about me is that I was born and raised in Wright County, I live in Woodland Township. I want to go over the oath just real quick, when we, when you're sworn in as sheriff, you take an oath that you'll uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota to the best of your ability, I will do that, I support the Second Amendment and the permit to carry process. My experience is 25-plus years with the Wright County Sheriff's Office, including 15 years as a field training officer, where I trained approximately 75 deputies as they got hired and were getting into the initial training before they were on their own. Also, I was with the Metro Transit Police for 18 years now, I'm still there as a part-time officer, working intercity bus routes and the light rail. It's been a great opportunity to work with a diverse group of citizens and a diverse group of officers, and work large-scale events like the National Republican Convention, the All-Star Game, Super Bowl, and two presidential details. Also, the last 10 years, I was a lead instructor at St. Paul's State University through the Alexandria Technical College, where I taught approximately 400 law enforcement students that had their four-year degree and had to get their post-licensed skills taken care of before they became licensed police officers. Three things I'd like to work on if elected sheriff would be employee retention, we've had 50 deputies, at least 50 quit in the last three years, main reason, department culture under the current administration, and another thing I'd work on would be mental health, opioid and other drug addictions, phone scams and identity theft, have more of a group and community effort with those that want to participate. I know firsthand from taking the calls, there's probably people in this room that know at least one person that's had to deal with these issues in Wright County. The next thing would be more of a group effort in dealing with local law enforcement, EMS, and fire departments, especially as it relates to school safety, school and church safety. And I've spoken to the police chiefs in Wright County and let them know what my plan would be as sheriff, and it would be a few things that would apply to Howard Lake in particular. Years ago, we used to allow them on our ERT, which is like a SWAT team, in our drug task force, and we'd allow them in our building. I don't know if you know that, but for the last eight years under the current administration, they're not even allowed to come into the building, get a drink of water, interact with the deputies, I don't know why, it's a question for my opponent and the rest of the administration, but wouldn't cost any money, hand out the key cards, we got to network and work with these folks. And we'd be able to triple our drug task force if we allowed one member from each of the departments on our task force, and we used to do that, this administration chooses not to, but wouldn't cost any money, we'd help everybody carpet bomb their area, they know the problem, people and properties, and I think we need to do that. And then the school and church safety, my opponent's been in charge of that for many years, I've talked to several police chiefs, law enforcement officials, and fire departments, and they, I haven't found one yet that said they've been invited to any of our active shooter training. He said he wants to get the rest of the people involved since he's been campaigning, but we had one of these trainings in April, and there hasn't, there wasn't any representation from any of these folks, including the school nurses, so I would move to, to make those changes. Another thing I'd like to point out, map here, the whole county is 770 square miles? Am I blocking the camera?
No, the camera will be on you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 770 square miles of the county, 500 square miles including Howard Lake, between 2:00 AM and 10:00 AM is covered by three deputies, that's been that way for about 25 years. The population of the county has changed from 60,000 in 1991 to 140,000, but we keep the same staffing there. Real-life example is a call in Victor Township this year, deputies asking for backup because it's flagged, officer safety, send two cars, they ask for backup, and the supervisor says your backup's coming from Clearwater. Then the deputy says, oh, could I get less lethal resources, and a taser sent down. The supervisor says, you may want to ask Howard Lake Police for those resources. We're the third-largest sheriff's office, I think we should be offering resources to Howard Lake, not the other way around, and me and the chief are the ones that were involved in that call. That pertains to staffing, training, equipment, my opponent says that he's trained in less-lethal taser and patrol rifle, it looks good on his resume, but in 25 years, folks, I have yet to see any of those items in my squad. But this pertains to the Howard Lake area because of response time, if your officers aren't on, and officer safety, so I guess you have to ask yourself, if you need a deputy in the middle of the night, and you see a flashlight around your building, do you want a deputy there now or 10 minutes from now? And I want to work on that, but we got to work on the budget, within the budget, I want to reallocate resources, not hire a lot of extra people. My opponent at one forum said he's asked for six additional people, and last night he said he asked, he asked for nine additional staff, I don't know what he's going to do with them, but we sometimes have five traffic cars wandering around the county without a lot of accountability, I think we can reallocate some of those folks to these areas without a lot of cost. So my mission is positive change at a minimal cost, and it does affect the Howard Lake area. So, point of campaigning in my mind is contrast and comparison of the, I'll call them combatants, I don't have any animosity to show, but that's just, just my deal. But, appreciate your time, I got a Facebook page, 42,000 people have watched some videos that are a lot of substance that we're talking about here. I think these issues that he and I are talking about, I think they should have already been settled, you know, when you're the leader up there in the command staff, and we should be talking about other things, but they haven't, so here we are. Any questions? Okay, one other thing, I carry these ringed keys with me every day, you start out with two keys, the building key and the car key for the squads, the rest of these I obtained by personal contact with the business owners that run township halls, fire halls, and businesses. They trust me in their buildings when they're not there, and you could trust me as your next sheriff. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Do you have that support list?
Yes.
Thanks, good luck in the election.
Thank you.
All right, item F, council committee reports. I can just give a brief wastewater commission update?
Wastewater, I was not there at wastewater.
You told me you wanted to give it the next time, but...
You were there, I was...
We actually didn't really have a meeting because there wasn't a quorum, so we had a very brief meeting where we didn't approve anything, so...
Well, we had a parks and planning last week.
Yes, tell us all about it.
And we're looking at some amendments to the licensing, the regulating of licenses for cats, for dogs, treating cats, not, probably, I think the consensus was to not worry about licensing a cat, if you will. Kennels, yes or no, in the city? Should I be speaking about, should I say what the general consensus was?
I think you should keep going, yeah.
Okay, so kennels, no, not within the city, we also talked about chickens. There is the likelihood of up to a dozen properties that have chickens, so moving forward, do we license them the same as we do dogs or cats? And if we do allow it, at what, you know, how many? And during the, during the meeting, the average was three to five, and I think we came up with a number of up to six, and the other domestic animals that were available, you know, that we could, that would be allowed would be up to three dogs and three cats.
So you could have six chickens, three dogs, and three cats?
You could.
That's a lot of creatures.
Well, and I think what Jason is referencing, not, not to cut in, is we haven't, we were just discussing our animal ordinance in general, there have been no voted upon changes, we're actually looking to have a...
Right, we're seeking public, there's going to be a public hearing for it.
Yep.
At a planning and parks meeting, or at a council meeting?
Which has been set, I'm trying to remember the date, is the, we'll pull up the date here in a second. And stepping back, I think one of the other things that we discussed was just simply the animal ordinance as it stands today. Right now, the city of Howard Lake permits cats and dogs, period. While we would never proactively enforce anything else, technically that would prohibit gerbils, birds, a whole host of what a lot of folks consider domesticated animals. So some small revisions in that regard have been discussed, and as Jason alluded to, the big question that we've kind of circled around gets into more of the farm animals. And there was some good discussion as to why it may make sense to allow chickens and why it may make sense to prohibit it, but currently the issue is all farm animals are prohibited, however, there's a very vague and misunderstood exemption in your city ordinance that basically allows you to have any farm animal, provided it's for an educational purpose, which is confusing, misleading, and hard to enforce as well. So the planning commission really discussed cleaning up the ordinance in full, they scheduled the public hearing for the 13th of November at 6:00 PM, and we're really hoping to hit the pavement with that so that we get a lot of feedback from folks that have strong feelings one way or the other. Fair statement, Jason?
Fair.
Thanks.
It was so much smoother than me, and also we are seeking applicants for a vacancy. Mike Horn will be leaving us at the end of the year, correct?
So, that, you'll still need, you need to fill that seat to make it full, are you still short?
No, that would be the seventh member.
Okay. All right, thanks for the update, anything else?
No, we just discussed 2019 work plan, that was it.
Okay, which was in our, in the letter?
In your packet, too.
Oh, in your packet, yep. All righty, let's see, where are we, department reports, item A, we, are you going to report on these? The liquor store is just for national purposes?
Liquor store is info only, we do have Police Chief Thompson here to give a brief update on the police department.
All right. Just wanted to update you all on, as you know, we joined the VCA statewide sex trafficking task force this year. Eric and I went on the first operation we've gone on, Thursday and Friday in Worthington, it was a juvenile demand reduction operation, which means we attempt to get people to come and meet a young girl for sex for money. And over the course of the operation, three gentlemen agreed to meet at a hotel with a 15-year-old girl to pay her for sex, and they were arrested. We, we would have liked to maybe get a few more arrests, but three arrests I thought was pretty good, considering we went with the 15-year-old age on the fictitious female. If we would have gone with 16 or 17, I think many more would have agreed, but for this operation, we were concentrating on the, on the really young girls. We're looking forward to, they're talking about maybe doing an operation in Wright County sometime in the next year, so we're looking forward to that. It's out there, it's mostly done on the internet, and we're just trying to be able to better detect it and enforce it here.
Anything else for us? All right, thanks for the update. All right, item H, the consent agenda, we have, let's see, five items on there, I'm just going to be through them really quickly. Consider accepting all reports and payment claims, consider closing Dutch Lake subdivision to vehicle traffic, geez, to vehicle traffic for Halloween, consider approving memorandum of understanding with Wright County Highway Department, consider resolution 18-25 approving increase to fire relief association, and consider writing off, writing off of uncollectible debt. Do any of those require any discussion from the council? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Presentations, public hearing related approvals, are we going to, oh, no, we do need to do this, introduction of new staff, Troye's Willing and Josh Halverson, Nick coming up for you?
Yeah, I think it's just more of a heads-up for the listening audience and residents in full. Tonight in-house, we have Josh Halverson, who's a newly assigned engineer through Bolton and Mink, he's been with us about a month now, helping out with some project management, it's been fun catching him up to speed on various things, but moving forward, you'll be seeing him represent Howard Lake. The other, Troye's Willing, is our Public Works Lead, who's going to report to Ms. Aurora and serve as the lead for Public Works, ultimately the replacement for Tom Gutford, but he's been with us a week?
This is his second week.
Yeah, second week. Already a positive for us, it's been nice and fun to have him around as well.
Well, welcome, Josh, glad to have you, next time you'll have a seat at the table over here, maybe?
We'll get you a plaque.
Yeah. All right, let's see, item B, consider approving routing of police assistance for the annual turkey tag-along. Kelly's here, do you want to come up and tell us about your event?
Hi, I am Kelly Brew, I'm a real estate agent in Wright County, and I'm also the sponsor for, this is our 10th annual turkey tag-along, it's our 5K race that will take place in Howard Lake, and it benefits the Howard Lake Waverly-Winstead softball program. So we're really excited, we have some new sponsors this year, and we'll team up with the softball program, and the police presence at the race has been, has made it a huge success, so just approving the route again and have, allowing us to have it.
Is the route the same as...
Same, yep, same route, yep, same, everything is the same, we do have a turkey that will be making a presence this year. So that's one new turkey. A turkey in a turkey costume will be present at the race this year, so that's a new addition. We, so we're excited about that, there'll be donuts and coffee and all of that, but the new addition, so 10th annual, like, we've had great, this has been an awesome event, we started this event 10 years ago, I was the founder of the race, and it's just been incredible to see it grow and have the support of the police officers on that day, especially with it being a holiday, we really appreciate it, so, we love it, it's a good team-building event, good community presence, and we really appreciate it.
So where can people go to sign up?
Yes, so on Facebook, there'll be an Eventbrite link that'll be coming out this week, so you can register online. The high school really handles a lot of the registrations, so all of the forums will be there, I also have some forums with me tonight, so I can put some out in the entryway as well, and there'll be, if you have any questions to contact, but we usually get about 200 is our average participation for that day, we have some, not only just the players' families that participate and all of that, but, you know, there's some people that participate from other communities, they do it every year as a family tradition, so like, moving your feet before you eat is our motto, yes. So it's great.
And hopefully the weather is nice.
Yes, and it is rain, snow, or shine, and we've had all of those, so, yeah.
Anything to add, Dave?
No, I think it's a great, we like to support it as well, reserves come out, we'll probably bring the CSO out this year.
Okay. Awesome.
Great.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, thank you, I'll see all of you there.
Yeah.
I'm not the turkey in the turkey suit, if anyone was wondering.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not, am I?
I did have a good...
We'll talk later.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
So do we need to approve this route?
Yes.
Yep.
So we will entertain a motion to approve the route and the police assistance for the turkey tag-along.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, public hearing on proposed tax abatement issuance of bonds, we need to close the regular meeting, open the public hearing, which we just did, just like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, tonight we will have a public hearing, which is required because we are looking to abate property taxes for a tax or a bond issuance related to the historic City Hall project. Tonight we have Shannon Sweeney with David Drowne Associates, who will walk us through all of our motions, go for it.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor members of the council, on September 12, uh, at your last September meeting, you initiated the process for issuing bonds to fund the historic City Hall project, what we had recommended was the issuance of general obligation tax abatement bonds. We had indicated that that was likely the most efficient alternative in order to fund the project that was as proposed, in that it offered the lowest overall interest rate and issuance costs associated with the authorities that we point to under state statute for borrowing money. And so, as, as a creation of the state of Minnesota, they dictate how and what process we go through to borrow money, and we had indicated that the tax abatement process offered the most efficient mechanism for funding this project. In order to implement the issuance of tax abatement bonds, you're required to hold a public hearing, which is the portion that we're satisfying this evening, we're required to identify a list of parcels that have some benefit associated with the proposed project. As this is a community project, we identified some residential neighborhoods, just for the purpose of meeting the requirements of statute. We have to identify properties that generate sufficient local tax in order to, you know, essentially cover the principal payments on the bond issue, but as we discussed when we called the hearing, ultimately this is a levy that's placed against all tax-paying properties in the community in the same manner as every other tax, we essentially level, levy locally. And so, while we're required to identify properties in order to meet statute that pay taxes in an approximate amount of the principal payments on the bonds, what we're actually doing is simply going through a process for authorizing a levy against all of our taxpayers. So, this doesn't pick and choose in any different manner than anything else that we do where we levy a tax for our general fund budget. The proposed abatement is same term as our bond issue, which is 20 years, in order to extend the duration from 15 years, we're required to ask another unit of government to participate, and they're required to decline, which we did ask and we did receive that, the decline to participate. And, and they understood the process and that we weren't, we weren't counting on them in this instance, I'll say. So, I'm here to address any questions from the council or public with regard to the proposed abatement, we'll be talking about the bond issue following the public hearing and awarding the sale of bonds, but for now, the public hearings regarding this proposal to use tax abatement as a means of making payments on debt associated with the historic City Hall project.
All right.
And I will note, Mr. Mayor, that this was published in the Herald Journal in accordance with the requirements to publish, we have not received any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the bonding.
Questions for Shannon?
No, I don't.
All right, and we can close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting, might as well stay there, I suppose, huh, Shannon?
Yep.
So, the first item, consider resolution 18-26 approving the tax abatement for the GO bond, which we just talked about.
Again, the resolution provides for a 20-year term on the abatement, which is during the principal payments that are paid on this bond issue, it won't exceed the principal payments on the bonds, which is $980,000 in total. Interest will simply be categorized as a debt service levy, probably getting into the weeds a little bit, which doesn't matter, but ultimately we have capacity under state statute for how much in tax we can abate, we're only required to abate for or use our capacity for the principal payment on the bond, so that's what we've limited it to, just so you understand.
Okay.
We're trying to retain that remaining capacity for other projects or economic development purposes.
All right. Questions, anything to add, staff? No, we'll entertain a motion then for resolution 18-26?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 18-26.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, consider resolution 18-27 awarding the sale of the GO bond.
As mentioned at our last council meeting, we set about the process for doing the competitive sale of bonds, essentially borrowing money for the historic City Hall renovation project. Through that process, there are a few steps that we took, as we had recommended, we did purchase a credit rating from Standard and Poor's, that process requires a management call with staff, where staff is required to answer quite a number of pretty hard questions with regard to the city's finances. You know, as usual, your staff did a nice job of preparing for that call, addressing the questions, and the result of that discussion was affirmation of your A-plus credit rating, which is a good credit rating, which, again, is a stable outlook, they not only affirm your rating, but they also establish what they see in the future, and they, they indicated a stable outlook. So, that credit rating saves us a fair amount of money because it, it provides underwriters, which are the folks that buy and then resell our bonds, or essentially are providing us the loan, or a conduit for that loan anyway, it provides them with a better understanding of your repayment ability, and so that A-plus credit rating establishes that you have a pretty good credit, not pretty good, you have a very good credit history, and, and you pay your debts. And so, ultimately, that credit rating versus an unrated issue probably saves us somewhere in the neighborhood of a half to three-quarter of a percent, which on $980,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And so, we were pleased with the outcome of that process. The last part of that process is to receive bids, which was, with, is what we did today, this morning at 11:00 AM, we received bids, and we did receive four bids, and that tabulation was handed out this evening, it looks like this. I was pleased with that response on something under a million dollars, sometimes we find that we may only get a couple of bids, but in this instance, we got four. The low bid was submitted by United Bankers Bank out of Bloomington, Minnesota, they're an entity that's essentially a service provider to family banking institutions in Minnesota, so it's likely that they're reselling much of that issue in the area, if not locally. So, that's what United Bankers Bank is typically does, so I would expect that a fair amount of those bonds were purchased in the area. The interest rate that they, a bid was 3.7386 percent, that is above what we had projected on September 12th when we drafted our memo, we were at 3.52 percent. I can tell you that the bond market since that time has gone up, probably close to 0.35 percent, or almost four-tenths of a percent, it started to come back a little bit, and so ultimately, we were about 20 basis points or two-tenths of a percent above my projection from September 12th, it's consistent with what we've seen in the marketplace, so rates are simply moving up, or they're trending upward. That means that we're going to pay about $30,000 more in interest over the life of this issue than what we projected on September 12th, or about $1,500 a year more in debt service payments, so just so you understand the impact of that. Again, if we could time the market, we'd all be retired and living, you know, on an island somewhere, we don't time the market, at the end of the day, our interest rate on over 20-year debt, because we have capitalized the interest for the first year and a half, so our term is actually close to 21 years, is 3.7388 percent. We can't borrow at that low of an interest rate as individuals, most businesses can't, and so, I would tell you that's still a very good interest rate over that kind of a term, and it is, I think as you'll see by the bids, they knew what your bonds were worth today. I mean, that bid spread is very narrow, the low was 3.7386, the high was 3.8715, not a wide margin, so, that credit rating helps them to hone in on what your bonds are worth today, and they all had very competitive bids, and so, we thought it was a good result, we thought it was representative of the market, and we do recommend awarding sale today. So, we're then happy to answer questions on the resolution.
The, the credit analysis that you have to pay for?
Yes.
Costs a certain dollar amount?
$9,500 in this instance.
But the savings, the projected savings that that, that we get back is, is what?
Well, two-tenths of a percent on this issue amounted to $30,000, so, I would say it's more than a half a percent, so, it's probably 60 to, you know, 80,000.
So it was well in excess?
Yes, yes. Otherwise, we wouldn't go through that horrible process.
No.
And we wouldn't subject your city administration.
Right, not just for my benefit, but for others.
I enjoy it.
I thought you loved those things.
I do, that's why I just said I enjoy it.
I don't, so.
I've been on two compliments in 15 years from Shannon, and it was, one of them was, I prepared for this call.
No, you did a nice job preparing for the call.
Is that credit analysis useful for anything other than this bonding process for this project? Does that?
Usually stick, I mean, you have to read.
Yeah. They, they carry that rating for the life of the issue, and they do do surveillance calls about every other year to maintain that rating.
Where they ask more uncomfortable questions?
Same questions, same questions, they review your audit annually. But as the mayor was alluding to, every time we issue bonds, we have to purchase another one, even if they are maintaining that rating. So, it's, if it wasn't worth it, we wouldn't do it. We as a firm receive no compensation for taking you through the rating process. We don't enjoy going through the rating process, but it saves you a lot of money. So, we, we consider that an important aspect of going through it, so.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, well, we will entertain a motion for resolution 18-27.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Closing's on November 1st, so that's when funds will be available in the city's accounts. Signature pages will circulate prior to that, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right, item C, consider approving arbitrage policy related to tax exempt bonds.
Yeah, as we're going through our bonding process, our bond counsel, Mary Ippe, with Briggs and Morgan, has strongly recommended that we adopt the policy that you have included in your packet. Ultimately, this policy seeks to codify almost everything that we do as a city and with our financial consultant anyway. Examples are included in your staff report, but that includes filing the appropriate documentation with the IRS, providing third-party entities with relevant policies and procedures, completing the arbitrage evaluations every five years, proper records, retainment schedules are followed, and show records of how proceeds were spent or invested on the actual project. And finally, records and agreements related to any non-governmental entities are kept on hand as well. We don't believe this to be anything new and different than what we're currently doing. Ultimately, what this is doing is as a council, you're seeking to make this into a policy that we would then use on our IRS forms so that we can check a box, so that we can say that we have this policy, which would ultimately protect us in the event that we fail to do any of these things and we're subjected to an audit or fines.
Everybody got that right?
I did.
Perfect sense. So, we're basically approving the policy?
Correct. That's exactly what you're doing.
So there is no arbitrage situation?
No.
Apparently, we're not, I mean, it's pretty rare, but. Have we ever? All right, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the arbitrage policy as presented.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, consider approving construction contract with Gopher State Contractors for historic City Hall project.
Yes, thank you, included in your packet, we have the contractual language for the historic City Hall project. For reference, at your September meeting, you directed staff to execute this agreement. When we were conferring about this with the city attorney, he recommended that you put the actual contract language in front of council as part of the public record to have it approved. So there are no deviations from what we have discussed, there are no changes to the project. I can go over any one of those details that you see relevant, but ultimately, this is approving the legal document itself.
So, we're just approving the document that tells us the details of the project we've already approved, right?
Yeah, so ultimately, in September, you approved a bid. Those bids and, or that bid and the bid specification has become this contract.
Okay, that makes sense. Probably a good idea. Okay. Council, questions?
No.
All right, we will entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, consider approving the quote to dispose of contaminated soils.
Yes, what we have in front of us is a bid to remove contaminated soils related to the Munson Lakes redevelopment project. These soils were discovered underneath the building itself, so we were not able to test that actual soil. And it's quite extensive. We estimate that there are 2,200 tons of contaminated soil that are currently about a block away at the former mill site that need to be disposed of properly according to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. We were hopeful that a lot of this material would, one, not be able, or would be able to be brought back on-site as part of the construction project. That is not possible because, one, the level of contamination is just so extreme that it just needs to be remediated. The second, the contents of the soil itself are not what's considered to be engineered soil, like soil that would be suitable for construction. So even if it was clean, it wouldn't be suitable soil. We estimate that at $32 a ton, this would be a $70,000 expense. That being said, that is an estimate just based on a volume calculation or estimate, but we believe it to be conservative, as in it would not be more than $70,000. One of the things that we have done, we've begun conversations in a formal application to deed under their cleanup grant program. Previously, you may recall, we were recipients of the investigation grant, which paid for a lot of our testing. By going through that grant process, we score basically enough points to be, to get this next grant. They won't guarantee that, obviously, it's a competitive opportunity. But conversations with them indicate that it would be a very favorable application. Assuming that that application is funded, that would bring the financial obligation down to the city to a level of $17,000, which we would then include on the TIF note for the project. So tonight, ultimately, we are seeking approval of a quote of $32 per ton, estimated at a total of $70,000. We did seek multiple quotes, this is the lowest by far. And we will proceed with that grant application and hope that that really comes down once that's awarded.
Is there a timeframe after you apply for, for it that you get word back, yea or nay?
It takes a while. The full application process for the previous deed grants that we've received were somewhere around three to four months. The grant provisions include reimbursing the city, provided that we have a response action plan, or RAP, and the work is less than 180 days old, which it would fall between those timelines. So assuming that we're funded, we'd be able to reimburse ourselves for those expenses.
And where does the funding come from outside of that?
The 17,000 would be pulled from our general reserves. We are establishing ultimately a TIF fund, or like a loan against that project, that Munson Lakes would pay back with their annual property tax disbursements.
In hopes that we're granted the money, though, but otherwise, it would be 70,000.
We would attach it to the TIF note as well.
Okay, either way, okay.
Oh, that was my question, so if we don't get the grant, it's still gonna go on the TIF note?
Yep.
Okay, which makes sense.
Yep.
Ultimately.
And they're, they're aware of that, Land of Lakes is aware of that?
They are. Ultimately, Munson Lakes, and we'll get to this as our, our legal documents come together, they are quite descript, as we've known from day one, that they expect to be delivered a clean site. They want no liability, and they want a clean site. Fundamentally, with any redevelopment project that I've ever participated in, that's the first ask. If you're lucky, it's the only ask, but it's always the first ask. So I don't think that's out of the question. And as a city, I mean, granted, you're considering a large dollar amount, but the but-for question is, if you're not doing this as part of this project, would this site ever be remediated elsewise? Like would the free market on its own seek to do the same things? And I think we've made a pretty compelling argument through this process that we need to be partners with Munson Lakes, and we also need to be quite active.
Okay. All right.
So my question is, so once this soil issue is taken care of, the project itself, what, I mean, at what point do we proceed, or do you think?
Good question.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I've, like I've been saying in your info letter for like, I don't know what year it feels like, we're very close. We are down to two provisions in the purchase agreement that I sent off the last language, at least what I hope to be the last language, to our city attorney, which will then give it to the Land of Lakes attorney. We wanna get going soon, because if we don't, we're looking at either winter build expenses or waiting until spring. Talking to Ram, the lead contractor on the project, they're still optimistic that they can get going Barnbusters yet this fall.
Should be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has been a grind, just every twist and churn of a project that you can ever conceive has been thrown at us. On top of that, what's that?
And lots of lawyers.
Yeah, and that was actually my next point. We have red lines on top of red lines on top of red lines on top of red lines, working with, I mean, it's a Fortune 50 or Fortune 100 company. They absolutely have good, powerful, persnickety attorneys. But we're getting there.
And what if it doesn't get there? It's, it's a hole, but then what happens?
We are still owners, a clean site still has value. I think the fallback discussions could come at a future time when we quantify our total cost into the project, what a clean site is worth and what your options are. But ultimately, if a project does not go forward, I would not recommend selling the property to Munson Lakes, and we would sell it outright commercially. And I can tell you, we have enough interest from commercial vendors outside that want to be on the highway. It probably, like, we were arguing that establishing a corporate office for our oldest business is the highest and best use, but there's still other uses, strip developments or other commercial properties that would make use of that property.
All right.
All right.
Anything else, council?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we will entertain a motion then to approve the quote to dispose of the contaminated soils.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, consider approving the 2019 Parks and Planning Commission work plan.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. So just to give you a little bit of background about why you're seeing this work plan in front of you tonight. So back in May of 2018, the council amended the city code to establish a consolidated seven-member Parks and Planning Commission. And as part of the updates to that ordinance that governs that commission, there were provisions that require the submittal of an annual work plan to the city council for approval. So over the last several months, the Parks and Planning Commission has been meeting and discussing goals, reviewing the series of park evaluations that they completed this year, and putting together kind of a draft timeline for what we're going to accomplish in variety of meetings throughout the year. So this work plan that, that was attached in your packet covers some of the areas that I mentioned in the agenda item, including making improvements to the Lions Park beach, looking at beginning the park planning for the former middle school site, looking at ways that we can create a task force to enhance our trail connectivity, a lot of focus on meeting with community groups, creating facility use agreements, things like that that have been kind of hot topics, especially at the Parks and Planning Commission, but even at the council level, some of these topics have come up as well. So this is something that the Parks and Planning Commission has discussed, and they approved at their last meeting, and are looking for council buy-in and support on that work plan.
Well, I just wanna say, it's really nice to see a work plan, so kudos to the, to the Parks and Planning Commission for, 'cause I'm sure that a lot of work went into this, and, you know, it's, it's good to have a plan, and they put a lot of thought into it. And, you know, I know that they have all these great ideas, and now, you know, to get them down on paper really makes them a lot more real, I think. So, good job on that, all of you around the Parks Commission who may be watching. That was really the only comment I had, but.
And I would just add too, that while these are very specific kind of boxes to check that we hope to go after over the next year or so, ultimately, they're all tied back to your Parks and Trail Plan that you have adopted, or the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. But it really makes those two big guiding documents into something real that impacts every resident in a very real way. Does not give blanket approval for all, or some, or even none.
It's a plan, that's the big word of the.
You know, and that's the other point that I would like to make too. If you see things that you may disagree with, or even in your head have other things that you would hope to have on there, I think either now, or even just as we continue to work on this, bring those things up. But this is a pretty well-flushed-out list that the Parks and Planning Commission has put together based on these previous discussions, and ran through Aurora's head in a very, like, meaningful way that I think we can actually attack over the next year or so.
Anything else, anyone?
No.
All right, well, we will entertain a motion to approve the Parks and Planning Commission work plan.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, I just have one other question before we approve. So will they revisit this plan annually and amend it, that's, that's the plan?
Yep.
The plan for the plan?
The way that the ordinance is written, a work plan sometime towards the end of the year is required to be submitted to the city council. We're trying to tie it into budget discussions, which we're doing currently. And ultimately, we'd also follow this up with like a progress report, or in the very least, an annual report that explains what has been done and what we hope to do different in the future.
Thanks. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item K, old business, there is none that I'm aware of. Item L, administrator's report, we had a list of meetings, upcoming meetings scheduled for information, anything else to add?
Yeah, just two quick notes. Next Thursday, October 25th, at 6:00 p.m.
From 3:00 to 6:00.
Oh, 3:00 to 6:00, thank you, Aurora.
The regular.
Yep, thank you, 3:00 to 6:00 will be the last farmer's market. We're hoping to make it into a little community celebration. We have a superstar celebrity performing live music, Jason Dieter.
That was a pretty impressive build-up.
Yes.
Are we still live?
We are. So, yeah, we'll have live music, we hope to have fun stuff for the kids. We're gonna have a lot of public works equipment, because it's kind of the transition into fall and winter, so you're gonna see snow piles out and so forth. Just hope to celebrate the farmer's market and the season that they had. Second, more of a reminder, voting November 6th, right here at City Hall. And as a final reminder with that, you can register to vote online, you can vote absentee at Wright County Courthouse.
And you can register to vote on the day of the election?
I was gonna say, today was actually the last day to pre-register, so you can register on Election Day. Or absentee voting at the county.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the administrative table?
No.
All right, well then, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned. You got lucky, it was a short one.